I'm going to call to order this work session for February 7, 2024. Commissioner Jones is joining us via Teams. Commissioner Githens and myself are present in Nat U Hill Room. We have a couple of agenda items before we get to planning. Ms. Setonia, what do you have for us?
Hello again, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning and letting me speak on this project again. I'd like to talk to you about a little bit more in detail on the Stip Road, Morris Creek Road project. I have another time-sensitive addendum to our existing contract with Lochmuir Group, where they will be completing staking and surveying of the construction limits prior to tree removal. So I received this before the packet for the regular work session went out, but I would like to have this ratified at the meeting on the 21st. So I wanted to spend some time to tell you about it, since I know I'm bypassing our regular Stormwater Management Board meetings. That meeting isn't until the afternoon of the 21st. So I wanted to tell you about this contract in case you have any questions. So we need to have the construction limit staked so that Bluestone can go in and know exactly where the limits are for the clearing, staying within our easement areas, of course. It was easy for them to add this on to their existing contract, and as soon as we have this approved, they'll be able to get out there, hopefully by the end of February, to complete that work. It'll take about two days. Within that, I also have a little bit of extra funding. The total amount is $12,200. Part of that is going to be for surveying some of the water lines that we may have conflicts with for the actual construction. Those water line replacements will need to be engineered, redesigned, if they exist. So we'll need to have those surveyed. So I'll have the surveyor out there. I'm going to take our crew out and see if we can do that, East Monroe Water Corp., so that they don't have the resources to get all that done themselves. So this is how we've figured out how to make it work and have the project move forward. So, yeah, that is the status of that. So it's, again, very time-sensitive, just because the bat window ends on March 31st for protection of the endangered Indiana bat. So I'm happy to answer any questions or talk more about this project if you'd like.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens, any questions?
I know that you had forwarded stuff to Ms. Freeman, but I haven't seen a hard copy of anything, or electronic copy. Is there anything that we can look at or view or?
Can get that to you. I sent it late yesterday, so I apologize for the timing.
Yeah, it wasn't forwarded to us.
Okay.
I'm okay considering this without the verbiage in front of us, because we would have to ratify it on the 21st anyway, so.
Okay.
And legal has looked at this, I would assume.
Yes, Dave Schilling reviewed it.
Great, thank you.
Did we state the amount?
$12,200.
Okay. I didn't hear that. That's part of it. Just wanted to check.
Commissioner Githens, would you make a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve this contract with Lochmuir. It'll come out of Fund Number 1197. The fund name is Stormwater, in an amount of $12,200. I hope I got all that.
Second.
That's correct.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we realize that time is short to get this done, so I appreciate that we could work together and make it happen.
Appreciate it very much.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Cockrill, please call the role on the contract with Lochmuir.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, and so we'll go ahead and have that on our agenda on February 21st to be ratified. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. That's what you needed. Okay. Ms. Purdy, do you have something?
No.
But, Mr. Crohn. You have something for us. Thank you for waiting.
Oh, no problem. All right, one place we can never get done talking about enough is our Good Omen, Earl County Jail. So this is yet another item that we need to look at there. So in the jail, you have two of the key systems are obviously the control operations, which runs the doors, the elevator, access to cell blocks and all those. The other side of that is the security camera system that also integrates into that control system. Both of those items currently at the Monroe County Jail are having multiple problems, have gone end of life, are having hardware failures. Let me not did that two words. And so we need to start addressing that as soon as possible. The first scope of work on that is the digital video recorder that actually stores the data that's taken off the cameras, so the security camera footage. Right now, we have two of those DVRs. One of those DVRs, we've constantly had to replace the very expensive storage drives in. We believe that to be an issue with the server itself. As we've replaced hard drives, we still have had some new ones fail that are showing issues caused by that server itself. SAS believes that that unit can be sent out to Exact Vision and be repaired, which is much more cost-effective than replacing the unit at the rough quoted price of $20,000 to replace that unit. So that's the first item on this scope. The second item on this.
Let me go back.
I'm sorry.
A half a step here. So we already need the information to make a motion. So what is the cost?
The cost of Scope 1 for that DVR is $800 to have that item sent out for repair.
Okay, and that's with SAS?
SAS will be responsible for going on-site, removing the hardware, packaging it, shipping it to Exact Vision, and then returning it back into its production state once the work's complete.
Fund name and number, do we have?
We're going to use Fund Number 4811, which is the 2018 GO bond.
Great, thank you. All right, now we're ready to move on to the next one.
My apologies, I gotta.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You say the SAS is going to do one part of it, and then you're sending it to Exact Vision. So do each of them get paid out of this? Or, I mean, is it just a single contract with just SAS? Or how?
We won't know until we get reported back for Exact Vision. That's to cover the repair. So we'll know from Exact Vision, once SAS sends it to them, whether it can be repaired or not. So we're looking at the 800-plus potential cost for Exact.
Just list both. That is easiest, just to say both companies $800. Okay.
Initial cost. Okay.
Okay, sorry. Thank you for trying to figure all this out.
Yes.
Understood. Okay, item two on this request. Geolcom has gone through and identified multiple locations throughout the jail that could either use increased camera coverage or is lacking in camera coverage altogether. With the increased number of cameras, the current two DVRs that's already installed, including the one we just discussed in Scope 1, can't handle the addition of 19 cameras. So this will add 19 cameras, another 400 terabyte digital video recorder, a power-over Ethernet switch, and two intercom stations that tie into that whole control package. Monroe County will be responsible for any wiring. That includes electrical Ethernet and communications wire for the intercom boxes. So that will be, have to be a separate contract with another vendor to have that wiring work done. Cost of this scope is $94,575.
$94,574, was that it?
$94,575.
Seventy-five, okay, thank you, sorry.
And that is the same out of GO?
Yes, this will also come from the 2018 GO bond, Fund 4811.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion?
So, can I do this in two separate motions?
You could just do it all at once.
Okay, well, then I will do it all at once. I move approval of a contract with SAS and Exact Vision for DVR repair. Fund name, 2018 GO bond, Fund Number 4811, in an amount of $800. And, I'm sorry, I don't know who we're having this contract with for the cameras.
This is Security Automation Systems as well.
Security Automation?
SAS.
Okay, okay. And then additional contract with SAS to provide increased camera coverage in the jail, in an amount of $94,575. Fund name, 2018 GO bond, and also Fund Number 4811. Sorry, that was disjointed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Now I'll take comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, what's going to happen while the one piece of equipment is off being repaired?
We'll be setting up a temporary server to run those cameras.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Githens?
That was my question as well, so thank you.
Mr. Cockrill?
Yeah, I just want to make sure the record reflects that, you know, the $94,575 is above our $50,000 and below 150,000. So normally, we would get three quotes for that, but because this is a contemplated and using our current system and replacing current and or expanding to our current system, there is an exemption from the bid requirements for that, and so that's how we're handling this one.
Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrill, will you please call the role on the two items for the 2018 GO bond?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right, thank you so much.
There was a third item on that.
Okay. We don't get them. Oh, okay.
Should have been.
We really need this stuff written out before we get here, but, okay.
It was there, however, it did not get to you guys.
I don't have it.
I know, but he just submitted, just for the record.
Do we want to table that for another time, or do we want to continue?
You're here.
Okay. So item three, this will also be from SAS. It'll be on the 2018 GO bond as well, Fund 4811. The control system that I spoke of earlier that operates the doors, the cell blocks, and the elevators has gone to end of life. The server that it sits on is unsupported, as well as the controller software itself. So SAS is proposing to replace four control station PCs, as well as the data logging server that stores all that, and all applicable licensing. Total cost for this scope is $25,585.
Yeah, I move approval of the contract with SAS to provide additional coverage in the jail for our control systems. This will be Fund Name 2018 GO bond, Fund Number 4811, in an amount of $25,585.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Comments, questions for Mr. Crohn? Commissioner Githens?
Just how soon will this get taken care of?
Since I have to work with a third-party vendor, another party to get the wiring done, I need that to coordinate with SAS and the company. There hasn't been discussed at what time that work will start. I don't know if they will base other work, try to get it all done at once, or how SAS intends to try to put this work together.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones, questions, comments?
I think this is something that's certainly needed.
Yeah, and this is one of those things that we have to repair in the jail, even as we're contemplating building a new one, because it has to happen. So not ideal, but we appreciate Mr. Crohn bringing this to us and dealing with the issues on a timely basis. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrill, will you please call the role on this agreement with SAS?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
And these three items should be on our agenda for ratification on February 21st. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you for your patience. Before we get to planning, is there anyone else that has an item for our work session?
I have a couple of quick things.
Thank you.
And the first quick thing is the highway contract with the highway union guys. We needed to add, or we would like to add the language for who gets call-out time to include only employees with a CDL license. And the union has looked at that. That's, Lisa has some plans she's working on to maybe bring in people who don't have CDLs, so we think that's going to be important, because they need the CDL to do a lot of the work. That's one. The other is, I spoke with, we've been working on the Capital Improvement Board in our local. I had a call before this meeting with Marjorie Rice. I think the expectation is, we all think we're on the same page. We're going to have a meeting, hopefully tomorrow, to kind of group up and see if we are, in which case, we will, if we are, then we will begin the process of going through the four bodies. I just wanted to give you guys that update.
Great, thank you. Questions for Jeff, anybody?
I really hope we can see the CIB at our next meeting, in our local.
The Interlocal, yeah.
Sorry, yeah.
Yep, that would be good. All right, I hope it goes well, fingers crossed and toes crossed. All right, anything else? Ms. Purdy, nothing? Okay, all right. So, planning, thank you for your patience. We have Ordinance 2024-04A. I'm not sure why there's an A there, but, Mr. Smith, thank you for your patience and for staying online with us. Please tell us about it.
All right, thank you. And, yeah, that'll have to, it'll have to be updated, but I'll explain. So this is for the Whaley PUD Outline Plan Amendment, and this is number two for this PUD. And this is located at 4810 West State Road 45, concerning approximately 12.34 acres. So staff, due to the complexity and the number and type of recommendations for this Outline Plan Amendment, staff went ahead and separated this into A and B. So it'll be 2024-04A, which represents the positive recommendations that were forwarded to the county commissioners, and then 2024-04B, representing the negative recommendations that were forwarded to the county commissioners. However, if the county commissioners feel that this is not appropriate to do, and they should otherwise be combined into a single document, we are more than happy to do so. So you can express that to me at the end of this presentation. So we've got Ordinance A here, representing the positive, and I can go back to this in a sec. And then Ordinance B, representing the negative. In any case, so for this Outline Plan Amendment, it was taken to the Plan Commission on January 16, 2024, and this concerns allowing for the after-the-fact disturbance of what is known as sinkhole A and sinkhole B on this property. Also to allow for an additional use, known as boat and RV storage to the property, and then also to allow for both seven feet of additional fill on sinkhole B, and also to allow for all disturbance of the sinkholes on the property. So I can kind of go through some background information at this site. At the Plan Review Committee on June 8, 2023, some concerns were brought up regarding the use of boat and RV storage. So what does that look like? So what is the definition? How does that look in terms of development? And as well as concerns regarding the sinkholes? So like, what type of uses are you proposing?
You're muted, Mr. Smith.
Sorry, I'm not sure what happened here. How much did you hear?
Limit the uses.
Limit the uses? Okay.
We just missed the last sentence.
Okay, so anyways, so, let's see, let's backtrack here. So the PRC had some concerns, and they were really trying to see about coordinating with the MS4 Coordinator, making sure that all requirements from Monroe County Stormwater are met, and also had some concerns about where that boat and RV storage might go, and if there were effects to allowing that use, such as runoff, or any other materials being kind of washed into those sinkhole areas. So a timeline here, I've got, so in 1997, this property was rezoned to a PUD, and in 1998, that PUD was amended, and that changed a condition that moved the area of permitted grading further west, but not to exceed the defined line located on Exhibit 3 of the PUD ordinance. So fast forward to 2014, KNS, which are the current property owners, purchased the property and received a development plan approval and land use certificate. However, in 2015, as evident per aerial imagery, grading over sinkhole A is evident. And then post 2016, fill over sinkhole B is also evident per aerial imagery. However, in 2022, staff did receive a use determination form that was submitted to inquire about convenient storage, but this is no longer being pursued by the property owner. By June 8, an enforcement case was opened due to the fill in the sinkhole that staff had noted, and the petitioner has since applied for a grading permit, which is still active, and that is pending an Outline Plan Amendment approval. And then in 2023, this outline plan was submitted to staff to address the conflict with the outline plan and the fill without proper permits. And this petition was taken to the April 5 Drainage Board, and they reviewed it and provided comments. So this area, pre-1997, was considered to be light industrial, so it does include a lot of different light industrial uses that are already permitted in this PUD. And I believe that was to closely align with what was there previously, which was the cuts, cut stone and stone products provided by the 3D Stone Company at the time. What we have here is what the current site is on the left, and I apologize, the quality had to be reduced, so it's not as clear. But I do have circled here in red the issue areas, and this is where sinkhole A and sinkhole B are located. And then on the right-hand side, we have the approved site plan. So the approved site plan has this very clearly delineated line going all the way up here, which states that there should be no disturbance west of this line. So any development should occur east of that line. So this site, regarding the sinkhole conservancy area review, this site did receive two rather extensive reports, one done by the Hydrogeology Incorporated, and one done by the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Those reports are also included in this packet, and they are towards the end. But to summarize what those findings were, according to the Hydrogeology Incorporated report, they identified sinkhole 1, which is sinkhole A, to no obvious impacts from existing lay-down area for parking, which is Exhibit 5. They identified sinkhole 2, also known as sinkhole B, to have been partially filled with pulverized concrete. However, there were no obvious impacts observed during the field study. However, they did mention that due to the elevation of the fill site being higher than the surrounding properties, those surrounding properties could potentially be impacted via surface runoff. According to the Indiana Department Environmental Management report, much of the site contained unpainted concrete dumped on the west and north banks of the lot, and some of those areas had black plastic sticking out, which was noted as likely being the linear material in the bed of the roll-off. So, but because no loose black plastic material was observed, and concrete material was not identified to be within the sinkhole itself, their investigation was closed out with no violations having been observed, and that report is Exhibit 6. The Drainage Board simply provided that, a condition to approve the bio-retention design criteria provided by the MS4 Coordinator, and also recommendation to look into certain types of plantings with amended soils and deep-root vegetation. So as previously stated, there is a grading permit on file, but that is not going to be issued until they have a successful Outline Plan Amendment. The 1998 Outline Plan defined the uses that are allowed at this site, so they are pretty extensive, but I have separated them based on type of use. So we've got agricultural uses, public office facilities, business and personal services, retail, we've got automotive and transportation, and then we also have the largest category, which is manufacturing industrial uses. What is currently at this site is primarily remote garbage or rubbish removal facility, as well as offices. So part of their Outline Plan Amendment is to propose adding an additional use to those said uses, and that is RV and boat storage. However, in our current zoning ordinance, we do not have a definition for boat and RV storage. We do have a definition for boat storage and the conditions associated with that, and that's also included here in the packet. So part of the recommendation was that the petitioner provide us with their own definition of what boat and RV storage would mean at this site, which they did provide, and they did also include that in the ordinance, which is the 2024-04A ordinance. And then this site is primarily in an area that's pretty well-mixed. You've got business zones to the east, a PUD to the west, and then you've got agricultural rural reserve to the south. And then site conditions, as previously mentioned, the major concerns with this site is that there are three rather large sinkholes present on this property, and you can even see that demonstrated here in the aerials. You've got sinkhole A, which is what my cursor is over, right here. You have sinkhole B up here, and these are the two sinkholes that have been disturbed. So that is what is triggering, primarily what is triggering this entire process. And then sinkhole C is right here. So these are just some site photos, so these are aerial images dated February to March 2022. And I'll have more aerial images to go over to kind of help paint the picture of what the site has looked like over the years. And then these are some staff photos. So this is what, at the time, this is what the current condition of sinkhole A looked like. So we've got storage here happening, and this is primarily over almost the entirety of what is considered to be sinkhole A. And then further north, we have the site of sinkhole B, has also been filled in. This was the current status of the site when staff performed a site visit. As far as the comprehensive plan discussion goes, this area is also in an area designated as mixed-use, which does allow for greater flexibility in terms of land use. There are some parts of this comprehensive plan which does not fit necessarily the exact use of the area, but overall, staff believes it, you know, closely aligns with this mixed-use definition. And so according to the comprehensive plan map... And so according to the comprehensive plan map. This is kind of an outlier in terms of mixed use, so it's kind of a. A bubble in this sort of west side of the county here. And then, of course, in the proposed county development ordinance, this would still be a PUD. And I did want to. Scroll down here. So this has been flipped, so this is looking west. But here we have provided by Bynum Fanyo. What the current status of the sinkholes look like. So single A and single C have pretty much retained their contours. But what is striking for this site is that sinkhole B has clearly been altered. And that is what Bynum Fanyo is showing here. So it's no longer. Round in nature, it's kind of curved here. And part of this request is to allow for an additional seven feet of fill. To be added to this location right here. And then I did want to. This is quite a long report, but I did want to scroll down here to some aerial imagery. And these are those reports that I mentioned earlier. So this is aerial imagery between 2010 and 2019. So this was how the site appeared in 2010. Which at least appears to be in compliance with the PUD ordinance. And then this was a site in 2013, so this was a year before KNS purchased the property. And then in 2016, we noticed a drastic. Increase in land disturbance primarily along this western southwestern corner here, and this is where sinkhole A. Is located. And then, of course, to the north, we start seeing some land disturbance occurring. Around sinkhole B, but it hasn't quite extended to its furthest extent until we notice around 2019. It's clear that this has been greatly disturbed and the elevation has drastically increased. And then scrolling all the way back up here. Sorry, I know it's a very, very long report. This is where I kind of want to talk about the differences here and why staff is separating this ordinance out into A and B. So for the first recommendation. Staff does recommend, did recommend to the Plan Commission and Plan Commission also affirmed. To forward a positive recommendation to the county commissioners for adding boat and RV storage. Only in the allocated area per the petitioner submitted site plan, and that is noted as exhibit two. And that is also due to its compatibility with comprehensive plan. And then recommendations two and three regard the sinkholes. So for two, a positive recommendation for the after the fact disturbance of designated sinkhole B. In its current state with no further disturbance and subject to the Hydrogeology and Indiana Department of Environmental Management reports. And then as well as staff recommendation number three. Which is a positive recommendation for the after the fact disturbance of designated sinkhole A in its current state with no further disturbance. And subject to both the Hydrogeology Incorporated and the Indiana Department of Environmental Management reports. For recommendation number four is also a positive recommendation, and that is for allowing storage in the area outside of sinkhole A. And I have an illustration that I will show right after this to kind of help paint that picture for you. And then recommendations five and six are the negative recommendations. So number five is a negative recommendation to allow for the proposed additional seven feet of fill to be placed on sinkhole B. And then number six is a negative recommendation to allow for any new disturbance. Or storage of materials within any of the sinkholes located on the property. So I have a little illustration here. So this blue rectangle here, which is the first recommendation, this is the location of the boat and RV storage. And that is per the petitioner's submitted conceptual site plan. Number two recommends represents the after the fact. Disturbance of sinkhole B. Number three here in red is the staff recommendation number three, which is the after the fact. Disturbance of sinkhole A. Number four is the staff recommendation to allow for storage in this area that is outside of sinkhole A. And then number five here is that negative recommendation to allow for an additional seven feet of fill. And then number six is the general allow for any disturbance activities. And any of the sinkholes on the property, which staff recommended a negative recommendation to the county commissioners. And these recommendations were all affirmed by the Plan Commission by a vote of seven to zero. So this was a very long report, so I'm happy to answer any questions. And I believe Tammy Beerman, the Assistant Director, may also be able to assist in that as well.
Thank you. Let's see if my colleagues have any comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens.
I wanted to know if this will add any additional impervious surface and if so, how much. I also wanted to know more about the proposed boat and RV storage. I can't tell from looking at the the map there, how much acreage or square feet it's going to take up. But is this going to be enclosed? Is it going to be covered? What what's that storage going to look like?
Yeah, I would be happy to include a statement from the petitioner. I know they've got an idea of what they want that to look like. I don't have an exact number on the amount of impervious surface that would cover. Happy to find out that information from the the engineer.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I may be somewhat naive, but I am shocked that anyone would have covered over sinkholes nowadays. I thought that was very clear within our ordinances. I guess I would like to know if the studies that were done were just included the immediate area. Or were any studies done of any downstream effects from this?
I don't believe there were studies conducted for the downstream impact. I know that they had noted that due to the elevation that was added to the site, that that could that could potentially impact surrounding property owners. But the the studies that were referenced were solely focused on the sinkhole areas, so sinkhole A and sinkhole B.
Okay, thank you.
You provide us with some larger maps also that what's, I mean, we're already looking at something that most is an eight and a half. By 11 inch thing, and then there's the maps are squashed into that, and so.
Yeah.
So on page, what page of the packet is that? Ten. On page 10 of the packet, for example, to take those two different maps and actually put each one of them on a separate page. Because then when we zoom into it, we can see the detail and it doesn't get blurry. And the same thing with page 11.
Page 12.
12. That would be helpful.
Absolutely.
So the two, the two ordinances relate to the positive versus the negative recommendations. So clearly that's something we could do. I think, since you've given a really good presentation, I think. I would like to wait and see if my colleagues wish to realign that in any way. And I don't know when my colleagues would want to have this heard.
I would like to keep the two issues separate. I like the A and B. It makes it easier for me to understand.
But if you feel that one item should be moved from positive to negative or negative to positive, then we need to to let him know that. So but to give you time to review that once you now you've heard the presentation. Is the 28th too soon? Is that good? Okay, so can we bring this back for February 28th? That would be great. Excellent. Well, I appreciate you. You've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have another planning item, ordinance 2024 dash zero six. I don't know if it's Myers. Looks like it is.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, yeah. Can you zoom in on that document a bit more? It's just to fill a page, you know, fill the screen. Perfect. Good. Thank you.
All right.
It's huge TV in front of us and I still can't read it. All right. Thanks.
All right. So this is PUO 23 dash eight. It's the Bloomington Technology Park PUD Outline Plan Amendment seven. It's at 1444 South Liberty Drive. It's in the Bloomington Technology Park PUD, Bynum Beer and Township, section one. Basically, this one is an amendment to an existing PUD document, the outline plan specifically. The petitioner, which is Liberty Drive Medical Office Facility LLC, is requesting to amend the PUD ordinance. In order to permit light industrial uses. The petitioner is now, or excuse me, it's currently zoned for light industrial uses. The petitioner is now permitting, requesting to permit the same list of limited commercial uses. That are available for other lots within the same PUD. So basically, when the PUD was created, on the eastern side of Liberty Drive, there was a set of commercial type uses available. And then on the western side of Liberty Drive, it was more geared towards industrial or light industrial uses. Through time, this PUD has seen a lot of amendments and iterations. Some of those amendments have involved adding specific uses to specific lots within the PUD. And this is similar to that. Originally, the petitioner provided the idea that the reason behind this amendment. Was to provide a the right zoning or the right uses for a hotel. However, before the last Plan Commission hearing, the petitioner stated that that was just an idea. They're not stating that 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 is exactly 100% what's going to happen, but that it was just something that started the conversation. Oh, okay. Sorry, I had to zoom out a bit first for it to load. Is it showing up on your screen or is it blank?
Ah, it's blank.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know why it won't let me zoom in farther. I'm gonna keep it at this distance for now. If we have questions, we'll keep going. Basic, okay, so as I was saying, this has gone through several iterations. It's been multiple iterations through the final plan amendment process as well as the. Planning and Development Outline Plan Amendments. The items here on the page that are highlighted are one specific to this specific property. That's involved in this PUD Outline Plan Amendment number seven, and that is specifically lot 14A. So you'll see ordinance 2004 dash 44, that was for lot 14 before it was divided into lot A and lot B. And that was to permit a wireless communications facility. This on page three breaks down what the current status is for the permitted uses for lots within this PUD. So lot one of the subdivision, the Bloomington Technology Park subdivision, was actually excluded from the PUD rezone back when that happened. Lots six and nine are stormwater detention areas. Lots two, eight, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 are all permitted light industrial uses. And lots three, four, five, seven, 15, 16, 17, and 18 have this list in front of you of limited commercial type uses. For those properties. And the Highway Department did provide comments regarding that a driveway to the development be 30 feet wide at the intersection with the east-west access road. And that the driveway be 30 feet through the horizontal curves to allow for two-way traffic. Stemming off of that comment, the primary access to the site is through an easement, a driveway that goes into an easement off of Liberty Drive. And I'll show you a map here in a minute to to show that. So here's the zoning map. All the dark red you can see is PUD, and I have the property highlighted here in red. And then this is Liberty Drive that cuts through the middle. Okay, so this diagram on page five has it has all the lots identified and color coordinated for their specific existing uses. So the lots in the white are the lots that currently have the ability to do those commercial type uses. Whereas lots that are in yellow have the light industrial type uses. The lot six and nine in the blue are the stormwater detention lots, and then lot number one at the bottom in red. That was not included in the PUD. That has its own zoning that's separate. And so you'll note lot 14A is located here on the western side of the PUD. And you can kind of see the driveway that extends along its western and northern ends. And then it comes through lot 10A to access another easement that connects to South Liberty Drive. Site conditions is 3.8 acres. And it is within two separate critical watersheds, the Sinking Creek watershed to the west and the West Fork Clear Creek watershed to the east. They're not, they're not in the environmental constraints overlay, and there does not appear to be any carister sinkhole features on this site. Here's some site photos. It is on kind of a hill. So this is looking east onto the site from that driveway that I spoke about that extends along the west and northern boundaries. Just going to scroll through these. Here is here is looking west. And this is facing north. You can see the driveway that comes around the corner and extends on the northern side. This is just an adjacent structure. This is facing southeast. Facing northeast. Facing east. Facing south, south. Okay, and here we have a comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan is designated as Mecua Employment. Which is defined as employment oriented uses include light industrial, manufacturing, assembly, research and development facilities, flex slash office space, construction trades, warehousing, and other types of commercial uses. So the report goes further into the details of this particular district within the comprehensive plan. Keeps scrolling through these. Here I have the findings of fact. And then starts the exhibits. So we do have a letter to the Plan Commission and Board of Commissioners. Stating their request to amend the PUD ordinance specifically for lot 14. To allow for the more commercial type uses that are allowed elsewhere in the same PUD. They kind of detail all that here in their letter. And here is the draft site plan. This is just an as-built plan as it's vacant. You can see the easement here extending and then going through lot 10, and then coming up again. Liberty Drive is over here on the far right. And then coming up again, Liberty Drive is over here on the far right corner, upper corner of the screen. I also included the 2001-37 ordinance that established the PUD as well as the Staff Report during that time from 2001, in case you wanted to look through the history here. I think that's most of what I wanted to touch on. Just keep scrolling. Yep, and there's just more copies of Board of Zoning Appeals, the Plan Commission, the amendments that were made to they were exhibits to the Staff Report that I just spoke about. So I'm going to go back to the top. So the Plan Commission heard this in January, January 16. And they voted to forward this with a positive recommendation to the county commissioners mirroring staff's recommendation of a positive recommendation. And that vote was 7 to 0. Alan, I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Myers. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Githens?
No.
Okay. We have the other item on our agenda for February 28. We can add this one to February 28, or we could wait another week and try to spread these out a little bit. Does anybody have a preference for a date to hear this?
I don't see any reason to delay. I'm fine with the 28th.
Okay. You okay with that too, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Can we hear this on February 28, Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Great, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
In the meantime, if my colleagues have questions, they're welcome to send questions to either planner on either of these petitions. All right, anything else?
Long meeting.
Don't blame me. But a good meeting.
Yes.
Thank you all for hanging in there. Thank you, TSD. And we are adjourned. Thanks.